Good evening. We have a couple of proclamations tonight that we'd like to do before we get started. So if Ken Collier or Woody Stroud are here. We have a proclamation for Green Cats for tonight. I'll just read this to you. Whereas on January 9th, 2021, the Green Cats County Transit Board, Green Cats marked its milestone 20th anniversary of providing public transit services for Green County residents. And whereas the mission of Green Cats is to provide safe, reliable, and accessible public transit services for the residents of Green County, including those who reside in the city of Beaver Creek. And whereas in 2001, Green Cats began operating as a rural public transit service. And in early 2004, began operations as an urban public transit service. And whereas, Green Cats provides essential rides to medical facilities like Soin Medical Center, human services agencies, workplaces, including personnel employed at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, educational institutions like Wright State University, and retail shopping centers like The Mall at Fairfield Commons. And whereas, Green Cats also provides transportation by contract to Medicaid-eligible individuals and senior citizens for medical appointments for those who are developmentally and intellectually disabled so they can work in their communities, individuals attending mental health and substance abuse recovery programs. And new for 2021, Green Cats does Green County veterans who require accessible vehicles to the Dayton VA Medical Center. And whereas, Green Cats offers flex routes that circulate and connect the Green County communities of Beaver Creek, Fairborn, Xenia, and Yellow Springs, scheduled rides through Green County with limited service into neighboring communities, and mobility management that helps the public navigate their mobility options, and advocates for the solution to transportation challenges. Now therefore, I, Don Adams, on behalf of the Beaver Creek City Council, do hereby recognize Green Cats Public Transit on its 20th anniversary and express great appreciation for the transportation services provided to the residents of the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you very much. Just want to thank you for the recognition of our 20th year, our anniversary. Many of you may know from way back, over 20 years ago, Gleason Stanford, who was one of the very beginning institutions from Beaver Creek. Charles knows him, knew him. So you were, had a representative from the very beginning, helping us to get Green Cats going. And so I appreciate the support all over the 20 years. The North Fairfield corridor continues to be a very popular destination for our riders who are obviously going to medical appointments, shopping, getting a bite to eat, and employment as well, very much so. And so we're glad to be a part of your community and helping to serve the residents here in Beaver Creek. Thank you for recognizing our service.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the service that you offer to our residents and getting people around. Because there's some people that just can't get around without it. So, thank you very much. Now we have one more. This is a volunteer word. I'm going to ask Sharon Fultcher to come up here. This is another proclamation. I'll just read this and then we can discuss that. Whereas volunteers give their time and talent tirelessly and selflessly. And whereas volunteers' ideas, input, enthusiasm create and support many special events for the enjoyment of the entire region, spend many hours teaching children the value of teamwork, discipline, sportsmanship, and respect while increasing their motor skills through participation in sports. And whereas volunteers tally many hours transporting seniors to appointments, serving nutritious lunches, providing assistance and program support at the senior center. And whereas volunteers assist with first responders, thus contributing to the safety and well-being of our residents. And whereas volunteers share their wisdom and expertise when called upon to serve on community and boards. And whereas volunteers are vital to the quest to preserve the heritage and history of the city of Beaver Creek while strengthening and enhancing our community to make our city a better and more enjoyable place to live. Now therefore, I, Don Adams, on behalf of the Beaver Creek City Council, do hereby proclaim that the month of April 2021 is Volunteer Month in the city of Beaver Creek and recognize and thank all the volunteers for the contributions of their time and talents to the benefit of this community. Thank you very much.
Well, it is a privilege to represent our volunteers. As many of you know, Beaver Creek could not function without our volunteers. Senior Center, our sports clubs, and just whatever needs to be done, there's going to be a volunteer there to help, help get whatever it is, you know, accomplished. And so it is, it is a privilege to represent our volunteers here. And thank you so much for that.
Thank you. And thank you to all the volunteers. I know I volunteer a lot at different places and there's a lot of people out there doing the same thing. So, thank you very much. Now I get to put on a different hat and call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales, Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Have a motion, please.
Motion to, motion to excuse Councilmember Bales.
Second.
I have a motion.
Oh, and Mayor Stone.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Bales and Mayor Stone. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, now I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Could you all stand for the pledge and then remain standing for a brief prayer? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we gather tonight here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight, guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in matters before us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Now we have some minutes before us for the March 8th, 2021 regular meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
We approved the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need to approve the agenda first.
Did I miss it?
No, it wasn't on there.
It's not on here.
Not on there.
That's okay.
All right, we'll back up. We have an agenda before us.
So we have to move to amend the agenda.
To approve the agenda.
Well, it's not on there. So do we need to amend it first and then approve it or no?
I guess so.
Move to amend the agenda to add approval of agenda to the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now.
Now I move to approve the agenda as amended. Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we can move forward. We have minutes before us for the March 8th, 2021 regular meeting. Do we have a motion on that?
Move we approve March 8th, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We also have the work session minutes from March 15th, 2021.
Move to approve the March 15th work session minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Tonight we have a pre-scheduled speaker, Jason Tinku, from the Green County Sanitary Engineering Department. He's the director over there. Welcome, sir.
Hello, hello. Can I, I can take this off right? Well, just want to thank Pete and council for giving us the opportunity to highlight some of the activities going on at Green County Sanitary. My name is Jason Tinku. I'm director there. Been in this position about two and a half years. Lifelong, basically lifelong Beaver Creek resident and 1993 grad. So it's good to be back, contributing back to the community that I grew up on and helped shape who I am. So just wanted to give you guys a quick update about what we've got going on. Going to talk specifically tonight about our Green Forward initiative. And Green Forward is our reinvestment campaign. So what happened there?
On my screen. Oh, don't flip it anywhere.
Okay.
Go ahead and start talking. I'll get you.
Gotcha. But it does help guide the conversation a little bit. I don't have it memorized. Just a little bit about Green County Sanitary. I think, you know, one thing that gets lost in the shuffle here. People think, you know, who live in Beaver Creek that that's all we serve. One thing I want to highlight is we are a medium-sized utility that has services ranging all over the county, from the village of Clifton to Cedarville, out to Jamestown area, and then obviously encompassing all of Beaver Creek. So, you know, significant size utility. And one thing I wanted to highlight here is here's kind of our business circle. We call it the Circle of Life at Sanitary. So if you follow from water acquisition, that's our buried aquifer that we get our water from. We pull from, from that buried aquifer. We've got four wellfields. We're getting ready to develop a fifth one for additional water. We've got three water treatment plants. We've got the Northwest Regional Plant right next to Rotary. We've got this South Plant, which is actually now in the dead end of Shakertown Road. And then we've got the Southwest Regional Plant, which is out on 725 in Spring Valley area. So as you, as you follow the flow, so we're pumping the flow out into the distribution system right there with the elevated storage tanks. Businesses, residences use that. That's our cost recovery right there. So that's the, the cost recovery for the water services. The water gets used and generates sewage, which is obviously, you know, how we recover costs for the sewage. And we go to, into our sewer collection system. And from there, it goes to one of our four wastewater treatment plants. So we've got the Clifton Plant, we've got the Cedarville Plant, we've got the Sugar Creek Plant, and the Beaver Creek Plant on factory. And then obviously from there into the receiving stream, we discharge into the Little Miami River watershed. It's the state's, state's first national and scenic river. We take great pride in the, in the water quality that's occurred over the last 20 years in keeping the Little Miami clean. The circle in the middle there is the Environmental Services Facility over there on Greenway. So we have a full-scale recycling center for household hazardous waste, yard waste, et cetera, et cetera. So just a little, little bit on our operation. Some, just some stats here that people don't realize. We do have 27,000 customers. It's a, it's a lot to manage. We've got about 85 staff members spread throughout the department. Last year, we treated about 5 billion gallons of wastewater. We produced about 2 billion gallons of drinking water. So a pretty big operation. We're very proud of what we do. So what is Green Forward? So Green Forward is our reinvestment campaign. So obviously, my, my goal here is to turn the utility over and have solid assets and facilities for the next generation. You know, that's what we're trying to do here. The one thing that I heard loud and clear, which obviously I'd been connected to for a long time, is the hard water that we do produce. So the priority when I got here was how can we make it softened and how can we do it affordably? So that is all-encompassing. But our Green Forward program is going to be the next five to seven years. This is our reinvestment campaign. Why we're doing it? Obviously, Green County has aging, Sanitary has aging infrastructure. You know, we're right there. It was incorporated in 1980. A lot of the assets in the ground are at their, you know, at the end of their useful life. So we're going to have to start putting pipes back in their ground. We're going to have to start getting proactive on a lot of the replacements for our assets. So Green Forward is going to upgrade and add new facilities to deliver clean water and sewer services for the next generation. In short, we worry so you don't have to. You guys don't want that 3:00 AM call on a Saturday. We'll take those for you. Customers get clean, soft water from their tap and they can flush and forget and be confident that the treated water is helping to preserve our river. So just a quick shot on, each year, the ASCE puts together grades. Obviously, you probably can't see that, but water and wastewater, wastewater, the 2020 grade, I think, was a C minus. So it came up a little bit. And drinking water is a D plus. Came up a little bit as well. So we're in a great, a great time for the utility to really, really do some impactful things that'll help our scores. I wouldn't necessarily grade our utility in those grades, but those are nationwide. I mean, a lot of people are struggling. It's obviously not the hottest politic, political topic to be putting additional charges on, on your ratepayers at this time. So a lot of utilities are struggling and we've got a great opportunity to do something for our, our community with very little impact to the customer. So how are we going to do this? The first phase is going to focus on the water system. And we've got, you know, basically four main buckets there. We're, we're going to optimize the existing wells that we've got in place. We're going to develop what we're calling the Hilltop Well Field. It's a 56-acre parcel on Hilltop Road, right at the corner of Hilltop and Fairgrounds Road, that we recently bought. It's estimated to be able to produce about 3 to 5 million gallons of new water for us, for our plant. So we'll have plenty for growth in the future. We're going to put new water mains and rehabilitate some booster stations. So right now, we've got four service areas that are fed from Dayton to Montgomery County. And it's, it's strategically advantageous for us to, to provide those areas with our own water. We pay market rate to Dayton and Montgomery County. We can produce it a lot cheaper for ourselves. So the one thing we didn't want to do is downgrade their water quality. They're getting soft water from Dayton and Montgomery County. So basically, when we flip the switch on ours, we want to have the pipes in the ground to be able to provide soft water to those areas. The, another, another piece to this puzzle is we are getting ready to bid our water meter system. It's going to be, it's going to replace 24,000 water meters that are in the ground. And it's going to go to a fixed base system. So no longer does the truck have to drive around and get radio reads once a month. We can basically hit a button. It can go grab those reads. We can, you know, if a customer wants to check a read, they can call us. We can actually talk to that meter. And then the customer's also going to have an app on their phone. So they'll be able to track daily usage, usage over time. And then you can also set up to have a leak alert. So if your toilet's running at 3:00 in the morning or something like that, you can program it in to tell you, hey, you've got water going through your meter. Something's going on. So a lot of advanced features with that. We're very excited about it. That installation will start this summer and it'll go on through next summer. So it'll be a pretty, pretty significant project. And then obviously, we're going to talk a little bit about that, expanding the water treatment plant to include softened water. The second phase, which will be after we get the water work done, is going to be on the wastewater side of things. So Beaver Creek's wastewater plant is due for some, for some upgrades. Cedarville Plant, actually, because Cedarville University is growing tremendously, we're going to have to double the size of that facility. So we've got another capital investment program on the wastewater side of things that we're going to be handling on the second phase. So how are we affording it? All right. So obviously, you know, user rates are very, you know, we're very sensitive to that. Green County, across the last 20-ish years, because of the pace of growth and because of the necessary wastewater treatment plant upgrades that had to happen for basically phosphorus in the Little Miami River, the rates climbed real quick and we were the top. I mean, we were the most expensive utility for a really long time. And through some, you know, some smart management decisions and some concessions, I mean, we've worked our way into the middle range and I'll highlight that here in a minute. You know, I'm very sensitive. I'm a ratepayer. My parents still live here. They're ratepayers. You know, I understand how, you know, difficult that, you know, additional charges can be. So what we're recommending right now is a slight increase to water rates and a decrease on the sewer rates. So we're going to balance these rates out. Right now, our sewer rates are, you know, much higher than our water weights, rates are right now. So what we, we're going to present to the commissioners, once our financial model is done, is we're looking at about a three-year window of a 2% increase on water and a 1.5% decrease on sewer. And those are about mathematically equivalent because sewer is more expensive than water. And I'm going to show you a bill here on how, how that's going to impact, impact bills. But financial models, we're finishing those up and we're going to make recommendations to the commissioners. But they've tentatively given me the green light that that makes a lot of sense, you know. We do have a significant amount of sewer-only customers, all those folks on, on, on their own wells. So those folks will see, you know, just a flat-out decrease over, you know, the three-year window for their rates. But really wanted to be sensitive to the, the customer that buys water and sewer from us, not at the end of the day, not raising their rates. So, so here's just a, a series of time. Obviously, we're looking at 2023, 2024, and 2025. If you go down to that third row there, it, it's got the total average family bill. That's for water and sewer. And as you can see, it's basically flat. We're shifting more money over to the water fund and taking it away from the sewer fund. So, you know, very, it, very carefully crafted strategy that takes into consideration our residents and our customers. So it's a unique situation. I talked to a lot of other utility managers in the region and in the nation. They're like, you're doing what? You know, so it's, it's a really unique opportunity. We've got a lot of debt falling off of the utility at a very good time for us right now. So that's all we're doing is, is getting new debt for the utility. So if you look right here, the city of Oakwood does water and sewer annual survey. And as you can see, Green County is right there in the middle of the pack. Those are combined water and sewer bills. And when you look at this study, it's, it's, you gotta, you have to take it into consideration. There's really about only two other players that you can compare us to. That's Dayton and Montgomery County. I mean, you take, let's say, for, for example, the city of Xenia, very concentrated landmass. You know, it's all centered right there. I mean, we've got, I've got people deploying 30 minutes to get to troubleshoot a lift station for a sewage pump. So it, it's kind of hard to compare us with as broad-spreading and diverse as we are to, to other utilities. But Montgomery County and Dayton are going very aggressive on their rate increases. So we'll soon be the, the, the most affordable big person on the block. Actually, I think we're, we're close. But Dayton is just so large. They've, they've, they've been, they're able to keep a, an affordable rate. So, but the, the 2021 survey should be out in a couple of weeks here. So we'll see how it, how it all comes out. So how will it be funded? The Ohio EPA has the Ohio Water Development Authority. We're going to be borrowing either 20- or 30-year rates, loans from the state program. Right now, the rates are a half of a percent. So very attractive rates right now coming off of that. So there's a little bit more red tape when you go through these programs than, than if you did a bond, bond issue. But, you know, it's, it's much, you know, it's, the, the rates are just ridiculous right now. So we're exclusively planning on funding the, the improvements from that fund. So who's going to manage Green Forward? Obviously, we don't have, you know, widespread engineering. I mean, we've got a handful of engineers. So we, we use a lot of outside help. We're obviously, you know, using, you know, quite a bit of design consultants and things of that nature to help us implement this. So our staff is, is very busy right now. They're also very excited about the opportunity to, to do this. So. So how can customers stay updated? We will be launching this summer a website with, that'll exclusively host all the Green Forward. So it'll have the entire suite of projects on there. You'll be able to click on there, see what the scope of the project is, get any updates on it, how it's going to impact the end user. So we really want to, you know, go aggressive as far as our public education and transparency for this. So we're also going to be hosting quarterly public meetings, you know, for regular attendance for customers so they can ask questions or get involved, you know, however, however they would like. So. So just a quick breeze through. Obviously, I spoke a little bit about the, the Hilltop Well Field. We just entered into a contract two weeks ago with Black &amp; Veatch Engineering Firm. And we're going to be developing this well field. Second piece I talked about was the well optimization. So our existing wells, they were designed and installed over time and there was really no uniformity or standard. So we're going to be adding a lot of features and extending the useful life of those wells that we have out there already in the ground. Water treatment plant upgrade. We're currently in negotiations now. We're very close to entering into a contract. We're going to do that project through procurement method called design-build. So basically, we took the project to about 20% design and we're hiring an engineering and a contracting firm. And basically, they take that and then they work, you know, through the project, through the rest of the design, and they start putting shovels into the ground. So the advantage of that procurement method is you can save money, you can save time. Obviously, you get a little bit more flexibility as far as selecting design features and contractors as well. So we're very excited about that project. We're hoping to have that, that soft water completed by 2023, in calendar year 2023. So. It's a big project though. I mean, it'll probably be about a $30 million project. So. Booster station and transmission line improvements. I told you guys about this. I mean, this is to, to feed those areas currently served by Montgomery County and Dayton. Those are in design now. And we look to get some construction bids out probably at the end, towards the end of the year. Water meter system upgrade. We spoke about that. And then the sewer system improvements, just a quick flip through here. Right now, we've got a lift station elimination project that actually Pete helped support and actually this, I think this body did as well. It's to replace three failing lift stations over in the tornado-affected area over by Garden View. So that area, that project is 60% federal funds, 40% local funds. So it was a very great opportunity for us to hop on and, and find a way to, to benefit the utility and the local, the local economy here, obviously with, with federal grant funding. Clifton Wastewater Plant Upgrade. Clifton is a little village that ended up, you know, under our purview, I don't know, maybe 15 years ago. But it's a little packaged plant that services all the sewage from, from the village. It's due for replacement, well, past due for replacement. So we're currently under design for that project. And then obviously, I spoke about the, the wastewater plants, the three other ones that, that are going to need some improvements as well. And once again, all of those improvements are also programmed into, you know, that financial model. So all in all, we're looking at about a $90 million investment campaign all through, you know, debt capacity that's falling off over the next few years. So, great opportunity. Last thing I wanted to talk a little bit about is ionized abatement. So inflow and infiltration is water that gets into the sewer that's not supposed to be there. So through cross-connections from storm sewers to sump pumps, and we've got a large number of sump pumps that go directly into the sanitary in Beaver Creek. And what, what that causes is, is, you know, excessive peaks at the wastewater plant. As we get those heavy rains, everybody's sump pump. And, you know, when Beaver Creek was developed, a lot of those were just plumbed right into the sanitary. So it really causes really, really high flow at the wastewater plants and causes us to have extra tankage, extra process units, and things like that. So there's a possibility about us partnering to find a way to get some of that excess flow off of there. If it allows us to invest less at the wastewater plant, it may make sense for us to just remove it, you know, in some of those private properties if we can. So that's, that's program still in development, but it's something that we're, we're, we're looking into. So. So with that, apologize, the website is not up and going yet. That was an error on my part. But that's all the presentation I have. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It was good. I, water is pretty important to all of us. So it's, it's good to see you're working on moving things forward. Anybody on council have anything you want to?
A question.
Yes.
What role will Eastern Regional continue to play in this system?
The Eastern Regional Line?
Yeah.
So that's, that's the line that we ran out there that obviously we used to buy the bulk water from, from Xenia. That line is almost, I mean, it will pay for itself here in a few years. It's still going to stay active. We're going to be taking softened water out that line to feed those areas. Yeah. So it'll definitely still be a, a key asset. Yeah.
All right.
And that line actually runs right by the Hilltop Well Field that we're.
Oh, it does.
Looking to develop. Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming out today. This was very, very informative, very well-put-together presentation, very easy to follow. So very much appreciate that.
Thank you. We're working very hard.
I wanted to say thank you for keeping a close eye on the areas of rural growth in Green County. I know in Beaver Creek, we're growing pretty quickly. So thank you for paying attention to those details and for putting together this campaign.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, the, right now, the plant can, the water plant's at about nine and a half million gallon a day capacity. We have seen peaks, you know, creep up towards nine, especially during summer months. So the new plant capacity will be 12 million gallons a day at the softening plant. So should, we did a water model study that predicted the land use and future build-outs. So we should have plenty of capacity for whatever growth happens. So.
Thank you again. I just have one quick personal question. It's about, because I'm a ratepayer as well.
Yeah.
My wife likes to pay all of the bills online and we've had an issue with account numbers.
Okay.
You couldn't put enough numbers in there. You required more numbers than what.
I get it all the time.
So, and in fact, our bill got applied to someone else's for about three months and they almost shut her water off until we figured out what was going on. Are you working on that? Is that something that's going to happen? going on. Are you working on that? Is that something that's gonna happen, or?
Yeah, we are. Um, so when I got there, I ca- came to Green County Sanitary, was just at the tail end of the switching of the billing systems, the billing software. So we have done a, a gap analysis, and we are making improvements to try to streamline that, yes. Can I guarantee you tomorrow that it's gonna change? No, but we are, we're definitely, uh, you know, on a, you know, programmatic, uh, review to, to look at things. But, yeah, so basically, your question is, can we make the account numbers shorter? Okay, yeah. I, I will get back with you.
Because the bank only takes so many numbers when you do that.
Right.
And, uh, since we're on television, I, I had to ask that question. My wife, my wife is watching, so.
Well, because we're on TV too. I, you know, I joked with my mom when I was on the way here. I said, 'cause yesterday I went over, my parents live up on Larchmere, and, uh, I have to carry his salt bags down. And I said, "I can't wait till the softening upgrades." So.
Very good. Uh, thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming and talking with us. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing.
This is a renewal application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 929.02. The property is located at 3664 Swigert Road, Dayton, Ohio 45440, further described as Book Three, Page 24, Parcel One, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Do we have an applicant here tonight? Seeing none. Staff?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, again, this is an application we received, uh, we were forwarded an application from the Green County Auditor's Office, uh, for, uh, from Mr. Turner, for him to, uh, continue that, his classification as an agricultural, uh, use. Uh, the state, uh, law requires that every five years, they get a renewal of that, um, that, uh, agricultural use. And, uh, this Swigert, uh, Road farm has been an agricultural farm for, for as long as I can remember. Um, and so this is just their five-year renewal. Um, staff has reviewed the applicant's, um, request and their application, and we see no reason not to, uh, approve their, uh, application at this time, and, and we are recommending approval of, of their request. There is a resolution for your consideration of this application, um, which is part of the, uh, procedural, uh, steps that the, uh, Mr. Turner will have to go through to renew his application. But again, staff does recommend approval of his request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
And this is a public hearing, so is there anybody, um, public citizens that would like to come up and speak to this? Seeing none. Counsel input?
Yes, uh, two questions. Uh, first is, uh, procedural, um, but it, so it comes from, to us from the Green County's Auditor's Office, but it's gone through the Office of Farmland Preservation at the state level. Um...
That office ultimately approves.
Makes the decision.
Yeah, I mean, this is just, yeah, there's multiple steps in the application.
Uh, 'cause in digging through the website, and this is the second question, I found, um, um, 14 different, uh, farm locations where this designation's in place in Green County. Uh, are there others in Beaver Creek, um, that are contiguous to this?
Not to this particular property, but there are other, I mean, several of the properties at, uh, Miami Valley Research Park.
Sure.
You know, have this designation.
I guess where I'm driving with this a little bit is, um, you know, I, um, very much in favor of economic development. Um, but I also hear from residents frequently about, uh, preservation of, uh, green spaces, farmlands, et cetera. So just if this was a way that we could connect this to preserve some of the, uh, farmland in Beaver Creek.
Certainly, yeah.
But it doesn't seem like there's a contiguous, uh, connection point, so, um, I'll just let that lay.
Okay. Yeah, this is a fairly isolated piece of land.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? We have a resolution before us.
Motion to approve Resolution 21-10. Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 21-10. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I guess the motion's passed. Now, we have another resolution, uh, 21-11.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council, posing a moratorium of six months on the acceptance of applications for and the issuance of zoning certificates or conditional use approval for any sexual encounter establishments, adult entertainment facilities, or related uses.
Mr. McHugh?
Uh, yes. Uh, the intent of this is to allow a six-month period so that, uh, staff can, uh, undertake a review of its regulations, of the city's regulations, and make a determination of, should we have some additional regulations or change anything that we currently have? So this just kinda puts everything on hold to give us some time to, uh, look at this issue.
Good, thank you. Any input from council? We have a resolution in front of us. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 21-11.
Second.
We have a motion and a, and a second to approve Resolution 21-11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Counsel time. I'm gonna start with one of the, the ladies tonight, Councilwoman Schwartz.
Come on. I never get to start first. Um, I don't really have a whole lot. I just wanted to remind everyone, this weekend was absolutely beautiful. The weather was great. So get out to the parks and try and find those birds. I think that there are more of flutter, so check out the social media page for some hints, so we could hopefully win some prizes. Um, I also wanted to share with the community that the men's volleyball team, um, at Beaver Creek is doing their annual mulch sale. So as the weather is warm, I saw my neighbor was actually out putting mulch out today. So as it's warm, um, you can order mulch from the men's volleyball team. You have to have those orders in by April 6th. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to thank again all the volunteers in our community, given that this is now Volunteer Month for Beaver Creek. I know we have a great volunteer over here to my right in Mr. Adams, as well as a number of our other council members. So thank you to everyone who does so much good work in our community. We, we really survive and thrive on that. So thank you again.
Council McCurn.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Uh, April 1st, Senior Citizen Center having another bag that you can pick up, and, uh, just like to encourage the citizens in Beaver Creek to stop by. And, uh, I think it's $5 apiece, and it's a wonderful, uh, Easter lunch that you get. So, uh, I'm looking forward to people turning out for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dewar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, three items. Uh, first, I'd like to echo Councilmember, um, Garcia's comments, uh, on volunteers to thank you, thank them for all their hard work. It really does build a tremendous community, uh, spirit, and so thank you to everyone who, who volunteers. Uh, second, I was able to get my first COVID-19 vaccine shot today, so, um, thankful for that, and I'd like to encourage, uh, those listening to, to do likewise, uh, and so that we can all move, uh, forward, uh, beyond this pandemic, Lord willing. Finally, I'd like to announce, uh, from the Chamber of Commerce, uh, they're, um, bringing back the Business Links and networking events that have been delayed for quite some time due to COVID. But the first one back is, uh, will be held on Thursday, April the 15th, from 4:30 to 6:30 at Wellington Grill. I've attended a few of these, and it's a great way to see what's going on in Beaver Creek and to connect with local businesses. Uh, so liking everyone to, to encourage everyone to look at the Chamber of Commerce's website. Uh, that's all from me, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, uh, just had a couple of things. First of all, I know it's not Beaver Creek, but my grandson went to school here, so I wanted to congratulate the Centerville Basketball Team on becoming Ohio State Champions yesterday, which is really nice to have somebody from our area do that. Um, also wanted to thank the Green County Health Department for their efforts in getting vaccines to residents in Green County. I've been volunteering with them for the last three months, and since December, they've given out over 20,000 vaccines, which is a really
Wow.
amazing thing. Uh, and the, the ages are dropping now. I think, uh, it's down to 40 and above, and I, and the governor's said now that if there are appointments available, they can go all the way down to 16 and above. And I know that officially, that starts on the 29th, but get out there and get that, uh, that shot. Uh, let us get back to some in a sense of normalcy. Uh, and, uh, going along with the Volunteer Month, uh, the Beaver Creek Fire Department Auxiliary has supported this Green County, uh, Vaccine Clinic to the tune of over 2,000 hours so far. So, uh, I'd like to recommend them for, uh, just doing the job that they do out there. Uh, and that's all I have.
Wow.
Mr. Landrum?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, just a few announcements, uh, tonight. Now, my, now it did it again. Something's not liking it tonight, huh? All right, there we go. Uh, all right, so, uh, signal work. This, uh, everybody that was, uh, on, along Dayton-Zenia Road, this is now, uh, operational and working. Uh, this was scheduled to, they thought to move, because this is, uh, due to the move of Dayton-Zenia Road, the widening, uh, they had to move the pole for the lights, and, uh, they, they were expecting five days. They got it done in one. So there were temporary stop signs up, now they're down, and the light is working. So great work by the contractor. Uh, some other things that will be going on. This one is, uh, I know it's painful. It's like when we had the bridge, uh, on Dayton-Zenia, the culvert on the other end. Uh, when we had that replaced, it was closed for 10 or 11 days, Dayton-Zenia was. Uh, this is going to be closed, so you might as well say, uh, by the fire station and Noelwood Garden Center. That area is the thinnest part, the most narrow part of the road of the road widening, and there is simply not enough space to actually construct the south side of the road while keeping the north side of the road open. So for seven days, this is gonna be a hard close, beginning April 9th. Uh, Dayton, uh, road between, uh, Forestale and Central will be closed for the work. So about seven days is what they're, uh, estimating. But once the repavement is complete, then traffic flow will shift all the way to the south side of the road. So, which is good. So, uh, 'cause I know the north side, uh, is the, is the part Lee where they just kinda added. So once we switch to the south side, that's gonna be all brand-new asphalt, which will be much smoother than what we feel like we'd go four-wheel drive, you know, to go through right now. Uh, believe me, I drive it every day. I know it's a beating, so be very glad to get that, uh, moved over. So just keep in mind, we'll have further reminding, reminders on Facebook and on our website about the April 9th closure. Uh, Kemp Road, good news here is that, uh, they're going to be doing some more work on concrete stabilization and curbs, but weather-dependent. Of course, you always have to have asterisks, uh, on that, because it is spring, and it does rain a lot in spring. But this project on Kemp Road, believe it or not, will be completed by the end of May, weather permitting. So at least get Kemp Road done, and it won't be too long, uh, behind that sometime in summer that we get Dayton-Zenia done. And it was already mentioned about the parks, uh, about finding the, uh, the birds, uh, the hints, the tent. I think they're up to, are they up to seven or eight hints right now? But you can go back on our Facebook and find all, uh, ten that's coming up, and unscramble their song, and then you can email it to parks@beavercreekohio.gov by March 29th to be entered into the drawing for $50 in park bucks. Uh, so check out Facebook, uh, for the hints. And then just briefly, uh, I know we're planning on this in April, uh, staff giving a report, uh, on the levy renewal. Uh, the street levy renewal, you know what it is? It's a 3.4 mil street levy renewal, uh, which is set to expire at the end of 2021. And I, I'm not gonna go through all these. More information will be, uh, coming in the In Touch, and there'll be, again, a, a presentation, uh, by our Public Administrative Services Director. But these funds provide 76% of the revenue for the street levy fund. These funds also fund, uh, 37 employees. So these are your snowplow truck drivers. These are your, uh, employees that fill the potholes and do all the, the work, not the contractors like what we have on Dayton-Zenia. We hire, contract those out. But there's still so much. Uh, remember, on infrastructure and the size, we are second in the size of our city in this region, at, uh, 27.7 square miles. Uh, we're second largest, even larger than Kettering. So we have a lot, lot of infrastructure to take care of. Uh, tell, only have 37, uh, full-time employees, uh, doing that part. That's why we have a lot of seasonals. Uh, but, uh, this is very important to it, uh, and I won't go on any further. We'll have more of that. But think of that 500 and 253 centerline miles, but, which equates to nearly 600 miles of pavement that we have to maintain. And, uh, this is not a tax increase, as the money collected will stay consistent with the amount of funding received during the last levy cycle. So again, we encourage, uh, everyone to remember Voting Day, May 4th, uh, which will be here before we know it. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Uh, now's the time for citizen comments. If there's anyone here that would like to address counsel on any subject, uh, please come forward, give us your name and address.
Hello. Um, Fred Pence, 1070 Kenton Trace, Beaver Creek. Um, I am the co-chair for Owens Place, along with Owens Place Park at Rotary. And you've been talking about the parks. We're within the Beaver Creek Park, uh, Rotary Park, and I'm a co-chair with the Gussie Jones. And basically, here to extend an invitation to the council, or anybody in the public that wants to come. We're very excited. Um, we have plans and are ready to break ground for Owens Place's final capstone project, um, the Field of Dreams. It's been a concept we've been working on for about six years. And through private donations, and some support through the Green County Parks and Trails, we are, we have the budget, the renderings, the plans, the contracts. And if you could mark your calendars, Thursday, April 8th, 10 o'clock AM, we will be having a, um, groundbreaking ceremony for the Field of Dreams. Um, the Field of Dreams is a concept of a universal play-accessible field. Actually, fields, we're gonna have two fields. Uh, these fields will be able to be used for, um, Owens Place, um, handicapped, or we don't like to use that word, but, uh, for all abilities leagues. We have a league now. Uh, before COVID, it was up to over 100 children. Um, and it ranged from probably about seven years old up to teenagers. Um, they extended this and found out that the kids love, the season's a little short. They love to play kickball. So we're, we've adapted these fields so that there'll be not only baseball, a play surface that is accessible to foot traffic, uh, wheelchairs, walkers, or anybody. Um, we're very excited about it. We have, uh, adapted this field, so there'll be two fields fenced in with dugouts, nice dugouts. Um, and they will be able to be used for their kickball league as well. And, oh, thank you. Somebody's very resourceful. Those are the renderings. And this will be to the, would be the southwest, I'm sorry, southeast of the gazebo. If you've been down there, you know how nice that is, and we have that, uh, open area there. So this will be graded, adapted for drainage. And if anybody knows about Owens Place, the biggest problem we have right now is parking. Uh, we have an immense amount of people. Especially in the last year, we found that Owens Place has been a real respite for families, uh, individuals, uh, anybody with kids. They're pulling up there, and they're letting those kids go, you know, run the roads. Uh, we have a parking problem. So we're going to, if you look at the rendering there on the upper left, there's gonna be, I think, 20-some new parking spots, and several of those will be wide open for, uh, van-accessible, uh, handicap spots. So we're really excited about it, and would love anybody to come out and, uh...
Dayton, time again, sir?
Uh, so it's gonna be Thursday, April 8th, 10 o'clock AM.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, I'm excited about seeing that Owens Place come together with it, adding that last- Yeah, I'm excited about seeing that Owens Place come together with it, adding that last part of it.
Yeah, oh, I forgot, it's a very important thing. If all goes well, weather conditions, the contractor will have it completed within 180 days, so we'll have it done by the end of summer.
That's great.
We're figuring about, you know, the beginning of August. So the kids will actually be able to take the fields for fall leagues.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the, would like to address council? Well, that, seeing none, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.